Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022, meeting of the Franklin Board of Education. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky.
Here.
Dr. Kahn.
Here.
Dr. Beer.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you, and the meeting has been properly posted. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Community comment, does anybody want to community comment? Did anybody sign up? Please, Mary.
Mary Carol Levitch, 8208 West Coventry Drive. I appreciate all your service you've given over the course of time. If you're newer to the board, I'm glad that people are willing to step up. The only thing, the only comment I have is a couple of meetings that I've been to. I do wish that the board members would speak into their microphones because it's very difficult, especially if there are more people here. It's very difficult for, for people to hear. And, and it's important that we hear your comments, and I know sometimes, you know, there's a little inside joke type things, and that's fine. But I do wish that you would use your microphones more, whatever, just so that we have the opportunity to hear everything and not misinterpret things. So, thank you.
Appreciate that comment, thank you. All right, I think that concludes community comment. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. School board announcements, does, are there any announcements by school board members? Alright, thank you. School board calendar. There is a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, April 13th, 2022, at the ECC, and also Wednesday, April 27th, 2022, also at 6:00 PM, at the ECC. Item eight, district administrator update. Dr. Miller, please.
Okay, good evening. My report's pretty short this week, just a few things. It's actually kind of hard to believe that we're already at spring break, and I just hope that our staff and our students' or families are having a nice week. When our students return, we're going to begin our forward testing for grades third through eighth and 10th, and then this testing window will close on April 22nd. So as you can imagine, it's going to be a very busy several weeks here coming up. In addition to that, we're getting ready for our summer learning program. Last week, our families received our communication about what that program would look like and asked them to start registering their children. We do have that registration closing on April 3rd. I'd like to remind everyone that our high school musical, Matilda, is taking place April 7th through the 10th. There are several opportunities to see the show, and I know a few people at this table will probably see it more than once because their children are, are a part of it. So it's, it's exciting, and it feels very nice to have our musical happening in ways that it's happened in the past, and we're all excited to see it. And then finally, I'd like to add that I've been working on creating a outline to share with the new superintendent. So this has been a little bit of a quieter week for me, so I've already begun to, to write down a lot of things that I'd like to convey to the next superintendent. So I just want to assure you that I'll do everything I can to make that transition smooth. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Alright, on to number nine, reports, presentations, and other school board business, something we've been waiting for and are very excited about. Superintendent's search profile presentation. Dr. O'Meara, please.
Thank you all. Jerry, of course, regrets that he cannot be here. His son got married yesterday, so that's kind of nice. I do have hard copies of the entire report. The PowerPoint that I will share has the salient points for the board to review and for the community to, to review. I do have hard copies for all of you that I will leave, and I will email to whomever you designate a copy of the report as well so that it can be shared from your website with the community at large. Again, that's our recommendation, that you share all the work that we're doing with the community at large, but that is completely up to the Board of Education, how that, and how that is released. So, Mr. Sprague, if you can designate someone that you think I should send that to, I will do that in the morning, probably early, 6:00 AM is when I get up because I'm an old man. So I will do that earlier rather than later. And I will also email a report to Dr. Byer so that she has the same information at the same time as the rest of the Board of Education. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, I think Ms. Dahmer's would be the person to-
I kind of figured-
-to get it, and, and she'll-
So I will get that to you tomorrow, or-
-who needs to get it.
And then you can piece that, whatever, if there's portions that you want separate, I'm happy to do that for you as well. So I'll, I'll send you the whole document. Having said that, before you ask the question, the answer is 14. And I usually have board members ask me, how many people have applied? So we have 14 people who have applied. We have others in the pipeline that have started the application process. I would say, as of this second, you have a strong field, some very qualified people that have applied for this position and want to be superintendent at Franklin, and that's a good place to be. We don't close the application unless something changes until April 4th, and we will deliver a set of semifinalists after we interview them face-to-face to the Board of Education in mid-April. I forget the date, but it might be the 23rd as well. I don't have that calendar in front of me. So, that's kind of where we are, just to give you a status report, is kind of where we are. We've been, a lot of recruiting, both Jerry and myself. So, I'm happy to take any questions, but I also want to make sure that I have enough time to go through my report tonight as well. Any questions from Board of Education? Alan, you look like you want to say something there.
Nope.
I misreading you, of course. What do I need to do to, to get on the screen?
We're just getting Dr. Beer back on the phone.
She's disconnected.
Disconnected, so we're getting her back on the phone.
Oh, okay.
Okay, is, is your computer displaying-
Yes, I have cord, I guess.
-the image that you want?
Yes.
Alright, then we're having a problem.
Is he on our cord or the center cord?
He's on our cord.
Oh, he's on our cord.
Try it now, I just kind of removed and tightened it again.
There it is.
There we go.
That work? Okay.
That works.
I usually screw up technology, so I'm glad I didn't this time. Okay, so, you know me, you know, you know Jerry. There's something here that, I gotta get rid of. Okay, so, the board asked us to conduct some focus groups and open forums with a wide variety of stakeholders. The board values and, and valued the input that we've received from various stakeholder groups throughout, throughout the district. We also did an online survey questionnaire to gather input from school, staff, parents, students, and community members at large. And then we, what we've done is, based on the themes that have emerged from a variety of groups and stakeholders, created a profile based on this information. That'll be towards the end of the report when I deliver the profile. Just to give you some idea, the board and consultants will use this profile to recruit and screen and conduct interviews with candidates. When I deliver, if you recall, when we deliver the semifinalist slate to you, we will do what's called an interview workshop with the Board of Education to help process the interview questions that you may entertain asking candidates at the semifinal and finalist stage. So, this profile will be a tool that you'll use to help craft those questions. We'll also leave you with about 150 sample questions that other boards have used. So that's kind of based on our experience, that you may want to pick and choose. And Mike, you'll have to kind of get, again, input from your fellow board members before you design that interview question set. The Board of Education may use this profile to find out more about how the district constituents are thinking, how things are going, regardless of the superintendent search that's, that's going on. It may, it just kind of gives the board some insight as to how stakeholders view what's going on at the Franklin Public Schools. And the, and the community and you might use this profile to find out about the strengths and challenges of the districts, the perceived strengths and challenges of the districts. And if you ask Person A, they may have a different perception than Person B. I'm just kind of saying obvious things, but just, don't put too much into one, one person's perception. So, just to give you a little feedback, we had 76 attendees in the focus groups and open forums. We had 459 responses to the online survey. This is not a scientific report. We don't have enough of a response to say that this is a scientific report, but this is based on our experience and our protocols that we generated this profile. In all cases, if I give you a percentage, it's a rounded number. It may be 87.2, but I'm going to write down 87. Does that make sense? So we asked four key questions. We did this with the board and the other people. What are the strengths and attributes? What are the challenges that remain? What should the priorities be for the superintendent? And what are the most important qualities, skills, and experiences for the new superintendent to have to be successful here at Franklin? Again, the focus groups, we had eight open, I'm sorry, eight focus groups and open forums based on a wide variety of stakeholder groups. You can see the numbers there. And based on the focus groups, including the focus group that we did with the board, almost every respondent noted their pride in the strong teaching and support staff who have created a close-knit community of learners in the school. As one parent said to me, "There's a nice feeling of family at all of my child's schools," and she had three children in the schools. Many parents and teachers indicated that they specifically chose to live in this district because, because of its reputation for excellence. There's a climate of growth and improvement district-wide. Everybody wants this place to continue to surpass what they've done in the, in the past. Franklin is well-resourced, and there are high mics for, high marks for wide assortment of extracurricular athletic activities for all students. This was a common theme through all the groups that we spoke to, but especially the students were very happy with the amount of different things they could get involved with before and after school. The buildings and grounds are well-maintained, clean, and safe for students and staff. Again, many, many people said the same thing about the facilities. Teachers, administrators, and parents praise the engaged and committed parent community who places a high value on education. Sometimes that high parent engagement can be a two-sided coin. Students feel supported by teachers, expressing confidence and, confidence in teachers' willingness to provide individual feedback, demonstrate kindness and empathy when necessary, listen to multiple points of view. They want a superintendent who is kind, honest, loyal, and positive, and will get to know them as people. That's very important to your students here. Some challenges. A high-achieving school district like Franklin will inevitably experience pressure to raise and maintain test scores. But many participants noted that they want to see Franklin continue to focus on both academic rigor, which is important, don't get me wrong, but to maintain a, a sense that the social and emotional health of students is important. And this balance can be challenging to maintain. Another challenge is a strong desire to diversify the teaching and administrative staff. This district is diverse and getting more diverse each and every day. This was expressed in every single focus group that we spoke to, along with the hope that diversity, equity, inclusion are the priorities, are priorities of the new superintendent. Another challenge is to continue to attract and retain the most qualified and talented individuals in every work group, teachers and staff alike, in a time of growing shortages. Keeping teaching staff compensation competitive with competing districts is a must. This emerged from every single group that we spoke to. The expectation for the superintendent to remain in close collaboration with teachers, administrators, and the board places demands on a superintendent's schedule that may be greater than in some districts. Franklin also expects the new superintendent to be highly engaged, visible, and active in schools and the community. Continue, the, the challenge is continue to consider the impacts of the pandemic on students, staff, and families and community, and implement academic or emotional supports as needed. The pandemic may be kind of on the downswing, there's no question about it, and fingers crossed it will remain that way, but its effects still remain. And you guys all know that. Focus areas in the first year, this is on the book. I'm sorry for the small print, but I wanted to get it on one slide. So these are the priorities, ask to identify priorities. They express a desire for balance in providing that administrative program excellence with maintaining an emphasis on the whole child, including social, emotional, or, or health and safety. That was also designated in one of the previous slides. The new superintendent must recognize that the attraction and retention of staff is critically important. Many staff members and teachers fear, feel undervalued and underappreciated. And that's pretty much across the board. And that's something that, that, that we discovered through all of our conversations. The superintendent must be prepared to collaborate, to listen, and to respond to all constituencies, modeling civility and openness. They need to take the time to understand Franklin before making significant changes. This is a unique community, it's a special place to be, you guys know that. The new superintendent needs to understand that before significant changes are undertaken. They need to continue to focus on hiring and retaining the best teachers and administrators, prioritizing professional development and a growth mindset. Professional development is something that needs some attention here, there's no question about that. Teachers especially feel that they're not giving, they're not given individualized professional development that, that meets their needs and allows them to grow as professionals. They need to seek to hire a more diverse teaching and leadership staff that reflects what the community is and is becoming. They need to build trust and establish strong relationships on the very first day they walk in the door. The need for financial planning was frequently mentioned, frequently mentioned as a priority, including an assessment of facilities, enrollment trends, and budgeting. You as board members know that, but that's a priority. Respect the strong foundation of success. Assess what works and what can be improved. Plan for incremental change rather than wholesale replacement of existing programs and practices. You don't need someone to cut somebody's head off when they walk in the door here. You've got good things going here. They need to be able to build strong teams, establish effective working relationships with administrators and teachers and board members, providing support for building principles, which sometimes they don't feel they're supported by the superintendent, and seeking their input on a regular basis. Their voices need to be heard. Help all parents to become engaged in a positive way with their children's schools, all parents, setting meeting times and places that are accessible to all, off-campus, off, off district grounds if need be. Treat all schools equitably and get to know the staff and students in each building. The new superintendent should be a visionary leader who will develop a clear, ambitious strategy for the future that enjoys support among the staff and community at large. Desired skills and characteristics. The new superintendent needs to be someone who can build, in some cases, rebuild relationships and trust within the Franklin community. The person needs to be able to include all stakeholder, stakeholders in moving forwards towards completion of the existing district coherence plan. This should be a proven leader with specific accomplishments in their background, as well as being hardworking, proactive, transparent, visionary, and strategic. Experience in the classroom and leadership at the building level are important to many of the constituents, especially the admin team and the teachers that work in the district. Understand, they need to be able to understand how to motivate and manage high-performing team and use the talents of each individual. Each individual here has talents. Clearly identify and focus on a common vision for the future. People need to know what direction the boat should be rowing. Demonstrate openness, accessibility, thoughtfulness, likability, and responsiveness. The new superintendent should display humor, they gotta be funny. Compassion, warmth, and approachability while also showing humility and a willingness to listen. Am I speaking too loud? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay.
I think I got disconnected.
We're having an issue with Dr. Beer.
Oh, I apologize. Do you, do you want me to pause?
Well, maybe for a second.
Okay. If I press a button, it usually goes wrong, so I-
I don't think it's anything you did.
Okay. Glad that's on, being recorded.
Hello?
Alright, you're back.
Thank you, sorry to be so irritating.
The last point on this slide is that they, again, as echoed in the previous slide, understanding finance, business operations, and board governance is important for the new superintendent. The board and superintendent relationship is extremely important. Communication is the key to success. The new superintendent should be able to inform and inspire others through eloquent, eloquent speaking, as I say, as I say the word eloquent, skillful writing, and the effective use of multimedia and social media. It's, it's part of our world now, and they need to be able to use that. They need to be able to understand the needs of all students. Gifted, yes, regular track, yes, but including students with IEPs, 504 plans, English language learner designations, and a talented and gifted identification. The superintendent needs to be the face of the district while sharing the spotlight, recognizing the work of others, and providing opportunities for growth amongst all staff. The new leader should have the ability to balance confidence and humility, to act decisively, but to listen carefully and work collaboratively in reaching those decisions. But once a decision is made, that person needs to own that decision. They need to engage with community partners and prioritize visibility in Franklin, the city of Franklin and the schools. They need to be able to remain calm under pressure and demonstrate respect for multiple viewpoints. They need to carefully review information and collaborate with others before decision-making, then support that decision publicly. Participants in the focus group want the new superintendent to possess a deep understanding of existing programs and practices while also inspire, inspiring the entire community with a vision for the future of the district. This community is passionate about education and willing to support its schools, and Franklin is a destination district, both for parents and, and students, but also for staff members. The strong hope is that the new superintendent will become deeply rooted in the community and stay in that position for many years. So those are the focus group responses. The questionnaire demographics are here, and the questionnaire responses were not much different thematically than the focus group responses, which is good. You had 459 total responses, mostly parents, about 75%, almost 90 staff members, four who identified as community members, and 13 wrote down other. There might be a community member and a staff member and a parent all at the same time. So, it's, it's not an easy thing to discern sometimes. The educational strengths of the district, it's hard to read, I apologize, is the quality of teaching staff came out on top by a wide margin. The other one is the quality, challenging and quality curriculum. I'm not going to read these word-for-word, everything's in the report. The challenges is the quality of leadership in the district from all the respondents is the number-one need for the district. Tailoring instruction to individual student needs, especially on the levels that I mentioned earlier, as far as ELL, IEP students, 504 students, students who may not be in this, in the central track. The strengths of the district are the clean and attractive schools. Everyone says the same thing about Franklin. They love being here because it's, it's a great place to be as far as the buildings are concerned and, and the facilities. The other part of this is that many of the parents felt that the communication with the parents is strong. That's a good thing to, to rely on. Some of the challenges, staff morale and trusting relationships. Those are the two big ones that emerged. Almost half the respondents mentioned this as a, as a challenge or remaining challenge for the district. Another one that came up time and again is student conduct and discipline. There seems to be a perception by many constituents, whether it's staff, or parents, or community members, or whatever, that student conduct is a little out of control, and the consequences for that conduct perhaps don't fit the crime. I know we don't talk about students as criminals, but obviously, consequences need to be consistent, and there is a, a sense that those consequences are either absent or inconsistent. Priorities, we talked about, student growth and achievement, of course, is number one. We want that to be the top priority of anybody who works in a school district, but social, emotional health of students is number two. There has to be a balance. I don't know what I did there. Characteristics and skills for the new superintendent is trustworthy and displays courage and integrity was number one by more than half, and builds good teams and brings out the best in others was the second-place one, and has a clear vision for leading our schools and the school district was number three. Okay, here's the profile. Based on the information we have, you'll see a list of bulleted items. The profile is anything that I read here as far as the bulleted items is concerned. The new superintendent should be a person who prioritizes the recruitment, training, and retention of highly effective teachers and leaders, guided by a clear human resources practices, focuses on hiring staff who are diverse in race, gender, and background. Again, as I read these, please don't put these in any order. They're just, number one is not more important than number two and so forth. The person needs to demonstrate an understanding of and commitment to issues of equity, diversity, and inclusion, focusing on the academic and social, emotional development of all students and inclusion of all families in school life. They need to model active listening, encourage and support stakeholder voice and input, and fosters a collaborative process for shared decision-making, showing an openness, transparency, and a willingness to give credit to others. That humility is very, very important to most of the people that responded, both in the survey and the focus groups. They need to possess a genuine, warm, caring, personable, transparent, flexible, and approachable personality. When you see them in the hall, it's easy to shake their hand. And as, I say his, but don't get me wrong. Ask you him. And is skilled at building trust and maintaining a positive culture and climate. A positive culture and climate could be improved here. I'll be, I'll be honest with you, based on the conversations I've had. Sometimes, very much confidential conversations. They need to possess a deep knowledge of the best practices in teaching and learning. The student, the superintendent is student-centered, innovative, confident, and resilient. You've all learned that is through these last couple of years. They make decisions based on what's best for students, keep students at the center of planning and decision-making, and communicates decisions with clarity, reason, and empathy after considering input from stakeholders. They passionately, passionately embrace the current traditions and values of the districts, which are strong, including a focus on the well-being of children in every aspect of their growth and development. They have, they have a proven track record of, of proven track record of success as an educator and as a leader to positively impact student achievement and district outcomes. In other words, they've got a history of doing what we're asking them to do. They have a history of building strong teams that focus on a mission and vision of the district. They exhibit excellent communication skills. They build on existing methods and strategies to ensure timely and transparent communication that keeps internal and external stakeholders informed and supports a positive image of the district. They're able to communicate a clear vision for the focus of Franklin School District and inspires others to act in accordance with that vision. They establish and maintain a high expectations for all students and staff. Little timeout here. If the board and/or the senior staff administrative team, once the superintendent is selected, want to do two- or three-day goal-setting retreat in the summer, I think that's extremely important, just to kind of get after some of the things that we're talking about here. You need time to reflect, to talk, to relax, to have open communication, to have a, a, a good discussion of where the district needs to be. We can do that for you, but there's other people that can do that for you too. So I'm just throwing it out there. They work effectively with the Board of Education, extremely important. They align decision-making with the district's coherence plan that you have in place and pursuing those objectives with passion, transparency, and persistence. They need to possess successful experience as a teacher and a building-level leader. That's extremely important to many of the people I spoke with. They understand curriculum, teaching and learning, and all the pedagogy, and promotes instructional methods that are engaging and supportive of high academic achievement. They should be a person who values the unique needs of every student, and every student is unique, and allocates resources for programs in and out of the classroom that support students' academic, personal, and social, emotional growth, including the development of creativity, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills, the 21st century skills. We talked about several of these elements already. Display skills in fiscal management and knowledge of legal requirements affecting the district. Successfully forges close connections with local and state leaders. They have to be active in Madison, they, they just need to be. And is familiar with national trends in education. They need to become immersed in the life of the Franklin schools and the community. They're one and the same. They maintain strong presence in the classrooms, activities, and community events. They'll be here 24 hours a day. That's what I did. I loved it. What are some next steps? We will conduct interviews and reference checks using the superintendent profile as our lens. We will recommend candidates to the Board of Education as a semifinalist slate. The board will conduct first interviews and choose your finalists. You'll hold your second interviews, and we'll embed 10-minute presentations into each one of those finalist interviews. The board will make a selection of the finalists, conduct reference checks, and negotiate the contract with the finalist. And the new superintendent will begin duties on July 1st officially. There may be some transition time built in it, that's what we recommend, but that's between the board and the candidate. Questions for the board for me?
Do you feel like the response you got, the 76 focus group participants and 459 surveys, is that about what you had to- is that about what you would expect for a community this size? Better, worse?
I think it's a little bit better. I've done districts that were much larger, not only in terms of how many community members you have, but how many students you have in your system, and gotten half this number of responses. There is a little caution here to say that oftentimes, I don't think here necessarily, but oftentimes, the larger the percentage of respondents, the more the district needs some change. Do you know what I'm saying? Sometimes just people come out to complain. I didn't get the sense at these focus groups that that was the focus of their willingness to participate. I just think that Franklin has people who want to participate. Am I saying that right? That's my sense. Hope I answered your question.
Absolutely. That's a good sense.
So there are 14 candidates so far.
Right now.
And that's before the profile. Does that... I would guess, obviously, it will go up, but maybe some of those people will drop out. What happens over the next two weeks with that? Or three weeks, whenever the deadline is?
Tomorrow morning, I will share this profile with anybody who has either applied or started an application. Anybody who has questions about the profile, we will answer those questions. We've had many telephone conversations with many of these applicants already. We will let everybody that has applied know, and who will apply know, once they apply, that this is the lens by which they need to be aware of as far as their viability as a candidate here. I won't ever caution or recommend to anyone that, based on the profile, I don't think you should apply here. I want that pool to be as big as possible. Let Jerry and I kind of work through the profile and see what the matchup looks like. Does that make sense?
So the profile is... There's a lot of words, a lot of characteristics identified there. How do you use that against the applicants? Do you like check off? Is there a tool where you... Give you a numeric rating at the end? They meet, I don't know, 80% of the requirements?
Jerry and I have not... The first step is to design a set of interview questions that align with the profile. We haven't done that yet. Jerry's still at town. We'll probably get to that later this week. Once done, that will be the tool that we use to check boxes to see who has the best responses to the profile questions that we have not yet developed but will. But sometimes, it's not so much a checkbox, but a professional, experiential insight as to who this person is. Are they telling me the truth? Are they being open? Are they being honest with their responses? The second half of that is to, once we're done checking with the interviews, we will start checking references. So I will call a former board member or a current board member that they're working with, with their permission, and say, "Give me a time when John Smith or Jane Smith demonstrated their ability to deal in a positive manner with students of a diverse nature." So not only will their responses to these profile interview questions be important to Jerry and me, but the reference checking that we will do before we present the candidate slate to you will be a part of that equation. It's not algebra, by the way, even though I love algebra. It's more an HR kind of endeavor. And, as we described before, Linda, I don't know how many bullet points are there, maybe 18 or 20 or two dozen or something. I don't know. No one's going to hit all the boxes. It's just not possible.
All right. Okay.
I've never seen it happen. Other questions for me?
Anybody have any further questions?
Thank you for putting this all together.
Thank you. It's a great community, great schools. I'm enjoying it. I really am. I... Sometimes I'll walk into a community and start doing these things, and all people want to do is yell at me. That didn't happen here. It's never happened here. People want this place. People feel this is a great place, and they want it to remain great and get even greater. That's a good thing.
I just have one follow-up question. I wanted to ask you if there's anything... What makes it unique? Is there anything that makes us uniquely Franklin, based on your experience? I think you may have hit on it, that obviously, we're like us.
Just based on my experience, and I've done over 50 searches. Sometimes you go into a district that's high-performing, like Franklin. And there is a divide amongst stakeholder groups as to what next needs to take place, whether it's we need a new high school or we need a new football field or we need to spend more money on gifted and talented programs or we need to spend more money on extracurriculars or give more support to students with special needs. And they're uniquely attached to whatever that singular assessment is. It's hard to bring people together in the manner that I think reflected in the Franklin endeavor and that everybody wants this place to be the best place it is for kids. And there's not a big disconnect between A and Z on the things that need to take place here. The thematics that were across the focus groups and the open forums and the survey responses were almost uniformly, if not identical, then very close. There's a strong sense of what needs to take place and what the superintendent needs to be successful here from all stakeholders. That's not typical.
Thank you.
Anything else? I thank you for your time, and we'll be in touch. Obviously, we've got a lot more work to do. I will send Dr. By the reports probably first thing tomorrow morning. I'll leave this with you. You can distribute that to your fellow board members. There's a lot more information there than I share. Lots of background, lots of statistics, a lot of it's boring, but it gives you a sense of how I generated this report. Okay? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Safe trip back. I hope your traffic back and everything is better.
I hope so, too. I really hope so, too. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll wait for Dr. Miller to get back. There she is. All right, next. District Administrator Goals Update. Dr. Miller, please.
Okay. I have a document that I put in front of you. Hopefully, you have it there. So this is the draft of the update I have for you regarding the goals that I set at the beginning of the year. My comments are in blue. So if you look at the first page of this, you'll see under Goal 2, which pertains to the feedback that I'd be looking for through our Employee Engagement Survey, you'll see the latest data there and what those measures are at this time. They're not exactly where I'd like them to be at this time, but we still have a period of time before we get to June when we, again, have the survey go out. It's not uncommon, this time of year, our data is slightly lower. It's just, you know, end of winter, and it's a little bit more of a difficult time for people. But overall, these are still good ratings, I believe, but not necessarily hitting my targets quite yet. So more work to do. I'm not going to go through everything on Page 2 or Page 3... Excuse me, Page 2, because you've seen that before. Page 3 are the actual strategic actions that I have been working on this year. And in blue, you can see just a bit of an update. So with regard to mentoring our new Assistant Superintendent of Continuous Improvement, Dr. Mo and I meet very regularly, once a week, for at least an hour, and then many times, probably throughout the day. And then, in addition to that, we're collaborating, continuing to collaborate with Dr. Kohn. Not as much as we had been in the first semester, but we continue to meet with him periodically. Delegate specific leadership responsibilities to members of the leadership team to create quality plans. So although Dr. Mo works most closely with the principals on their school improvement plans and teams, this is something that she and I discuss so that I am made fully aware that those teams are high-functioning. System specialist collaborations is another area that I ask questions about and work to ensure that we are having those collaborations among our literacy, math, and student services system specialists. We're continuing to look at mental health and doing some AODA planning. You'll hear more about the mental health initiatives and where we're headed with that. I think it's a couple meetings from now, you'll see the mental health report. So I've been fairly active with that most recently, given our data that we collected around S R 3 and the need and desire to really look more closely at our mental health supports. And then, of course, COVID-19. Spent a lot of time doing that. Provide support and direction to the leadership team to ensure aligned goals under, again, Dr. Mo's leadership and our coherence plan. We're doing a lot more with this root cause analysis process to really help understand what is it at the root of the things that our data reveal to us are areas of concern. And then, ensure deployment of the communications plan. And I know that Mr. Kafka's been here. He's talked about it. And we continue to look at the analytics that we do have associated with our communications to learn how well we are doing. And then, meet with building principals. Every three weeks, I continue to do that. That's always in progress. And then, I also ensure that they do get formal feedback. And Dr. Mo is also involved in providing our principals with formal feedback. And the next category has to do with improved structures for keeping staff informed, assist district and building leaders in identification of key messages. Again, I work with Mr. Kafka on this. This is part of the communication plan. It's in progress. And again, we use analytics to measure how we're doing in that area. Part of that comes through in the Employee Engagement Survey. As you can see, some of that data on the previous page, how our employees feel about how well they're informed of what's going on. Ensure the district and building leaders will deploy communications that foster pride. We have school newsletters that come out every week. We work hard on our rec guide now to make a strong connection between the school district and our recreation program in general. We do five opening doors publications a year, working on employee recognition, again, through the feedback we get on that Employee Engagement Survey, trying to think about new ways in which we can recognize our employees in our publications when possible. And then, of course, we're doing the customer service training that you've heard about. Ensure the annual tactics of the communications plan are achieved. I have weekly meetings with Mr. Kafka, and he's right on the other side of my wall. It's constant communication. And then, of course, you receive board updates. I'll ensure short- and long-term goals are aligned with the district coherence plan. Again, weekly meetings with Dr. Mo, regular meetings with the building principals. And then, the other piece of this is school safety, working with the Safety Committee. And again, I mentioned to you the focus that we have on reunification this year and working hard to make sure that we can simulate that effectively. And then, the last category has to do leading... We'll lead in fostering pride in our districts. In our district, I'll do what I can to support the committee, that ad hoc committee of the board. That's in progress. Again, we'll use analytics to take a look at how we're doing with our communication plan. And then, just making sure that you get updates. So that's happening. So that just kind of gives you like a little bit of an idea of how I am monitoring things and moving things forward. And then, I just included this last page because I am retiring. Just in the last five years, if I had to think about the big rocks or the big things that, you know, were a focus for me... Obviously, my focus has always been on getting better and kind of moving us in the direction of being a better place to learn, better place to work, and part of a better community. Really just made that very consistently known among the district the last five years. I helped to initiate or I got our first coherence plan together with our core values the last five years. A little emotional thinking back. Kind of getting out of breath. Kind of getting out of breath. We hadn't had a plan in 10 years, so I feel really proud that I brought that here and I think it'll be alive and well. School safety is a huge hit for me, you guys know that, excuse me, you know that. It's been a lot that's gone on, all of our schools have secure entrances now. We have really good surveillance in our schools. We have an excellent relationship with the police and fire. And we do training and simulations. Okay, COVID. I don't think I need to say much about COVID. Lot of work went on last couple of years with COVID. We were able to do in-person learning the whole time. We did virtual options. It's interesting how we navigated from all of us in this together to a very divisive political environment. And together we weathered that, I think, very well as a district. And then I'm really proud of the medical advisory team that's together now and has really kind of a future focused purpose for this district in remaining together. And then on communications, I feel like they honestly improved about 100% from where they were five years ago. So I'm not sure that's what you asked for, but it kind of felt cathartic to me. Share that with you, so thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Dr. Miller?
I really appreciate the, this look back.
Thanks.
I'm just wondering, is rounding still going on? Is that a thing that we're still promoting and embedding in our practice?
Yeah, absolutely. So we like to take from the employee engagement survey kind of the themes and seeing areas where we know that we can improve. And then we kind of work with the different supervisors in all positions throughout the district. And we say, you know, what are some questions we can follow up in those rounding conversations with our employees to feel like they have the opportunity to respond to that in a different environment if they didn't necessarily feel like they could speak to it. And then there's obviously a lot of other conversations that are happening. So those are still ongoing on a regular basis.
So if you, if I asked employee in general, have anybody ever rounded with you? Slightly, they would say, yeah, just last week.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
I think most principals are doing three times a year. I think at one point it was four. I think this year, the bulk of them are doing three.
With every teacher and every staff member?
Yes, except the high school does a modified their sit team members. So their school improvement team members do an extra dose of rounding with the admin team. So they have like a layered rounding approach. And then the, the school improvement team members round with the team. So if you picture kind of a web, that was new-ish, not rounding, but that structure this year to do extra with that team. They really like it, you know, they report that they like it. So the high school, people may tell you looks different this year than in past years, how they're doing it, for what it's worth.
Thank you.
Thank you, other questions? You know, when you look back, it's quite a lot, especially in the last five years. So thank you very much, Dr. Miller.
You've set us up well for the future.
All right, SWSA updates, Ms. Wackowski and Dr. Miller.
So we put some notes together, hopefully you can see that, that document that Ms. Wackowski and I would just like to share a few things with you. Hit some of those bullet points, Ms. Wackowski?
Sure, legislators are done for the session and they've done a lot of bills that you can see listed below. Most of them are messaging bills, which is a political thing, so I'm not going to get too much into that. I wanted to clarify that the School Administrators Alliance, that SAA, because you, you will note that in the document, they, some are support or support and some aren't. And that is the lobbying arm of all the underlying associations. The School Board Association, the Business Managers Association, the-
District Administrators and School Personnel.
Everybody has their own group, but then over that is this alliance that actually lobbies with the legislators directly. So that's kind of how that works. And then we, any questions on that? Anybody want to find anything interesting you want to talk about or just be aware of some interesting things going on? I don't know how you want to react.
Linda, about the position of the firearm in vehicle on school grounds, which was passed in both the houses, AB 495 and opposed by SSA. Can you elaborate a little bit more about that? What, so is it-
Excuse me, I couldn't, it's difficult to hear.
Yeah. So Linda, if you can give some more information about the position of firearms in vehicle on school grounds by permit holder. Is it just having a-
I'm actually, I don't know all the details of these, that's why we kind of click into that. And I'm not sure if this is actually going to be vetoed or-
It, it is very likely it'll be vetoed.
There's a variety of things that are concerning in this list, so interesting times ahead.
It's interesting, they passed both how, the Assembly and the Senate, but they're Republican controlled, so it's not surprised that they would pass both. But we've been assured that they'll be vetoed, as assured as we can be until a signature's conveyed.
So then, if there's, the other thing we want to talk about is the, the letter that is being circulated for signature for support to do, to ask for some very specific things in the next budget. And we would, I think it's, it's a well put together letter. It does, it's a broader support than just school districts because of the encourage, you know, businesses are also behind this because it ties to economic development and, you know, preparing the labor force. So it has that focus. And it's simply an inflationary adjustment. We got no inflationary adjustments, so businesses are very, they can relate to that. Why did you get no increase? Everybody knows things increase, so they were surprised to even know that. And then the impact of higher cost students with disabilities, they understand that. So it's a very understandable position to take. And then also, it's unique opportunity in term, because there is a huge budget surplus. So their money is there, that's why it's, would be important to add, to make this ask now. So any questions? As far as signing onto this, you can see, if you scroll down, all the different businesses. The different businesses-
Thank you, Linda, for trying.
The business school and the districts that have already signed on. I don't believe this is the final, was it the final?
According to Ms. Phillips, it has been sent, but I think there'll be updates to this, then it'll be resent.
Right, yes, I think they're still building support. So as a board, would we be supportive of this or not is, is kind of what we need to decide. Is anybody opposed to signing on?
I would like to sign, I mean, I think that we should, I would support that.
Nobody is, I think it, yes.
I think it's important.
For the right reasons, I think it's, it was important to do that.
Essentially, I would do it on behalf of the district and then our logo would be added and our name would be added to the letter.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Linda, for putting it together. I really did. We talked, we get it.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we meet, we're good.
Yes, yes.
I like that this is a living document too and that it, and that we can look back and see what we talked about the last couple of months.
I think ours too, so, okay.
Anybody have any questions? All right, we will jump to the board self-evaluation discussion. Thank you, everyone, for, thank you, everyone, for filling it out. I wanted to start the discussion by saying one thing. There was somebody, the very last question, or the very last, very last page, page 12, it says, "Do you have any suggestions to improve the board's self-evaluation survey?" And somebody says, "Hard to say, as this is a new board due to new members, the utility of the self-evaluation depends on the board members." And I would say it developed, it really depends on the board discussion of it. You know, we can fill these out all we want, but if we don't discuss it and don't get feedback for each other on, on how we're doing and honest feedback, then I, I don't think it really does any good at all. So, so I hope we can have a, I hope we can have a good discussion on the board's self-evaluation. We can go through it, starting with number one, governance. And obviously, governance is the largest part of what we do. And there was five out of eight respondents, so each board member responds and also the administrative team responds as one, as one person. So out of eight responses, five said consistently met, most of the, excuse me, consistently met all the indicators and three out of eight said consistently met most of the indicators. So I think, does anybody, does anybody want to talk about their comments about governance? I think one of the things that I said, and I'll start this, is continue revisiting annual goals and strategic actions. We did a good job setting them, not so much revisiting them throughout the year, especially at, at board meetings. You know, it's good to set goals, but, but we need to follow up on them. So I think that's something we could do a little bit better.
Yeah, when I saw that comment, I was wondering if, if that just becomes, kind of like the legislative update has become a regular feature on our agenda. Do we need to, maybe not at every meeting, but you know, one meeting a month or every other month, have that as a specific agenda item, if you want to kind of revisit where we are?
Certainly periodically, it's a good idea to, to revisit it, I think that's a good idea. To have it sort of as a, as an agenda item so that those discussions happen. And so we make sure, even if it's just talking about it in the agenda meeting, make sure that we're discussing, make sure that we're moving forward toward our goals.
I also put, one of my comments was to review the handbook once a year, just to, and there are a lot of new people here, but it's just to look through it so we know what's in our, it's our own board handbook. You know, to see if everything is working well and if we need to add anything. But just, and that maybe once a year agenda item and, which remind you to kind of read through it and see if it's working, I think that might also help or keep us on top of things. Because we can kind of not pay attention to it, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I would, I would agree with you, Linda, it's not something I've thought about, but you know, just bringing it to the forefront of your mind even once or twice a year, just to kind of remind yourself of what's in there. Things change, obviously, year to year, so maybe, like you said, something needs to be added or subtracted. It's just probably a good practice to get into, you know. You go to your doctor yearly for a physical and check up on things, maybe we need to check in on our handbook.
Or maybe we could do as part of our retreat, could we?
That could be.
We could have a reading, but you could read as staff.
A dramatic reading?
I think that's a good part, I think maybe during the retreat, if you have the handbook, you know, it's a, it's a time set, you know, rather than the board meeting, I think board meeting can-
More business, yeah.
Yeah, I think it'll be easier to have, easier to have retreats now that are, that are more focused on moving ahead rather than having to worry about social distancing and not being able to be near each other and, and not, not knowing what to plan. And I think it'll be, I think it'll be easier to have retreats as they were in the past. And get to know each other a little bit better, which I think is, is, you know, really important for boards. I think that's a good idea, I'm excited.
This is Angie on the phone. One thing that fell under this area was just the topic of basically how we conduct ourselves in meetings. I know that I personally am not always consistent in referring to people by their last name and then whatever their chosen or their given title is. So that's something I'm personally going to try and work on. I noticed that someone made a comment about people being recognized before they speak. I wonder if we could have some conversation about how everyone feels that's going in meetings.
Okay, I was the one who said it. And it's, I really liked that we all, everybody's talking, I really appreciate the input. But sometimes it's hard to say who speaks next. And as the chair, and I think Janet would do that though, we'd just kind of look and say, you're next, you're next. It just as a way of, of kind of ordering the discussion, because we all want to say something. How do we know who speaks first? We, you know, we don't know, so if the-
Well, I look at you first, Linda, always, because you always have something to say. And then-
I don't have to be the first one.
I'm teasing you.
Okay.
I, I think that's, yeah, I think that's something, I think that's something to work on. Especially since so, everybody is commenting and everybody is providing for a good discussion. There were times in the past when, when very few people would actually ask questions. And, and I think that, I think that everybody is really engaged in these meetings and I appreciate that a lot. And I do try to, I do try to look around and see who's anxious to speak. But I will, I will continue to try and get better. Or whoever's in this seat will continue to, to work on that.
And it does require us also to, to, you know, look to you, to put your hand up, say, and then you can call. Doesn't have to be formal form, it just makes it easier to participate. Angie, are you good with that, or?
Yeah, from what I could hear, it was, it was a little difficult to hear you, but yeah, that all sounds great, thank you.
Do we need to address Dr. Beer's comment about, because even just in this conversation, we've used both formal and informal names. Is there a consensus we want to come to on if I'm Ann or Mrs. Sapursky?
So I think, you know, it's, one of the things of addressing with first name is that it breaks that barrier of only communicating in an official manner, you know. Brings that ease of discussion. If I'm always, for example, saying Dr. Beer, Mrs. Sapursky, Ms. Sapursky, that creates like, you know, you know, more official, although we are in official business, but I think, I see that, for example, you know, my name is Dr. Khan, but at my place, they'll call me Dr. K, and it's fine with me, you know. Because, hey, you know, so I think having that comfort, that communication, although it just is the same person, but when I'm constantly, in my opinion, I'm saying, Mrs. Sapursky, Mrs. Sapursky, rather than Ann, I think even, for example, I might be saying, which she's not agreeing or disagreeing, but my using that first name creates a bridge of understanding and friendship. I think it's a more of a friendly environment rather than an official environment, although we are doing official business, that's my take on that.
Does anybody else have a feeling on that?
Yes, because of my last name, I tend to call people by their first name so they feel comfortable saying Alan versus Mr. Alex Androvich. You know, that's a mouthful. So I have a personal feeling on this, because I know that I'm bringing a problem to the board if we start calling people by last names.
Not a problem, it's a challenge.
Challenge, okay.
And it gives us a chance to show how well we can say it.
What do other board members think about that?
I prefer to be called by my first name. I'm okay with it.
Me too.
I'm okay with first name.
I'm really okay with it. I think that the, the question that has come up before is that because we are an elected body and this is a formal meeting and we're doing everything in a very formal way, there's a little bit of a disconnect if we use our first names, but I'm totally fine with first names.
I, Mrs. Carol Owich, please.
Could I make a suggestion? In your discussions, if you use the first names, that's fine. If you had to take a vote, then you would use your last names as a formal bow to election, your election positions.
And that's what we do do, because on the record here, it is Mr. or Mrs. or Dr. Yeah, so that's what we do do when we do take a roll call vote.
Yeah, I do think-
I'm going to hop back in, even though I can't tell if Mike's making eye contact with me. Look, I just called you Mike. It's always easier to go, for me also, to call people by their first names. And to me, it's actually a source of some pride that we are so collegial with each other. And I am proud of how we function in a respectful manner as a board. So as long as we can continue to do that, just don't call me late for dinner, as my dad would always say.
I, I think that I am more comfortable in a meeting that is being, because we're elected officials saying, or I have been more comfortable saying, Mr. Dr. Mrs. And I think that that's, I think that that's somewhat important. But it's, it's probably less important, I, I think it's less important than, than all of us thinking it's not. I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm not married to the idea. So I think that when talking to administrators, I think that I will largely still use their, still use their title. And I, I think that's respectful and I am not going to start calling Dr. Miller Judy in these meetings, even though she'd probably be fine with it. But I, I take, I, I do take the suggestion and, and think it's fine generally. Thank you, Angie. Anybody else on governance?
My input on communication, you know, it's a work in progress and somehow, even last year, when I was running for election, talking to constituents, they always, for some reason, it's not a major group, but there's a significant amount of group of constituents who think that, oh, that the input is not, you know, considered or somehow there's a disconnect or sometimes this decisions are being done in secrecy, you know. And we are working on that, we are constantly working on that, you know, of providing that, you know, communication, you know, with the newsletter, even the board members now coming 30 minutes before the meeting, even if we volunteer that. So I think we might just emphasize, as I've said in my past meetings too, that we must emphasize to the constituents, to the committee members of what exactly actually the board does, because everything that happens in the city of Franklin's, somehow, board becomes responsible for that. We are not, we are only responsible for the education of the kids within the school building and of course, the extracurricular activities and the budgeting. So we have specific goals and roles which we play in. And somehow, I feel that constituents don't have a good understanding of that. So it's a work in progress, I know that, but we must continue to work on making sure that- But we must continue to work on making sure that constituents understand that we are always willing to hear, there's an open, you know, uh, community comment section, which anybody can comment, say the comments, that we are here to listen to them even before that. So I think we must continue to emphasize that it's a open governing body, it's a board meeting in front of the public, and we are here to listen. So I think it's both ways goes where, you know, it's our explaining them that what is our roles, what are our objectives, what exactly we do, at the same time, giving them an opportunity to say. It's, I think it's a work in progress, but I just wanted to emphasize on that, because sometimes it's just, you know, once someone starts this myth, you know, or, or it's already having secrecy. No, this is not a secrecy, it's an open meeting. Please come and attend.
Yeah, I agree. I think we need to keep making sure that people know that we're transparent and, and that the school district is transparent. And we just keep move, moving forward on that. And I think we've, I think it's a work in progress, but I think it's actually working. All right, Board Performance Standard, two, establishing expectations. Very similar result to the first one. Five out of eight say we consistently met all indicators. And three out of eight say we consistently met most of the indicators. The comment, the question to comment on is, please detail a situation where the board either maintained focus or should improve focus on student achievement. I, I think a lot of us mentioned the at-risk report and how that was facilitated. Does anybody want to comment further? Or should we go on to the next one?
It seemed like most of our comments were pretty well in line on that one. We seemed to have consensus already.
It's a strength.
Performance Standard Three, accountability. The board holds the district accountable for meeting student learning expectations. And six out of eight say consistently met all the indicators, and two out of eight say consistently met most of the indicators during the last school, during the last year. Please explain what the board can improve to establish or maintain district priorities and standards. Does anybody want to talk about their comment?
This is Angie on the phone again. And also, I rarely give myself the highest, or the body to which I belong, the highest rating possible. So I'm the one consistently dragging down the performance indicators. I made the comment about the significant curricular change item. I think it's the last one on the bulleted points. And that just had to do with looking back at the conversation about the inroads program and just about making sure we have adequate information and time to review it in the future. We've already talked about that, but that was an explanation of where that point was coming from.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I think we, that, that was discussed thoroughly that evening. So I think we could move on from that, but I do agree with that.
I think one thing we might do better is, when we have improvement programs, we try different things, you know, circle back and see what was the impact? Did it happen the way we expected it to? I don't think we do enough of that. I can't give anything specific right now, although I could, I suppose. When we moved to the new health system, like at the middle school, it's been three years. Has it an impact? Or we have new math programs going in? Can we connect the dots a little bit more on that too? Because they're not, I mean, we have expectations of the programs. They're not, and, you know, not everybody's, we have some pushback on some of these changes. So I think we deserve to go back and see, you know, was it done the way we expected it to? And, and just circle back a little bit more.
Yeah, we certainly have the best intentions with all the, or the administration has the best intentions with all the things that change or get put in. But we need to assess how we did truthfully and, and more, more frequently to know, did we do well? All right, anybody else on? I think we should move forward to responsiveness. And maybe we don't need to talk about this very long, because all of us but Dr. Beer said consistently met all indicators. I'm teasing you, Angie. I don't know what you said. But I do think that-
Probably me.
I do think that we are fairly responsive, more than fairly responsive. And, you know, I, I think we've, I think it's been a time, the last year, the last school year or the last two school years, when we've had to be responsive. And, you know, I, I think most of the credit for responsiveness goes to the administration, not the, not the board. But, but I think the board has been responsive as well.
I think it might be, maybe you could almost see it as like one of the silver linings of the pandemic of COVID, in that it kind of forced us to interact a little bit more. And I think from that, you know, we were getting so much more community input. We kind of had to start responding a little bit more, I feel like. And it kind of spurred our, you know, the new members on the board and the situation with COVID. And it kind of spurred, you know, our communication committee, committee. And again, trying to engage more with the, with the community and circling back to those comments and things. I just think, you know, there's not a lot of positive things we can talk about from COVID. But there are certain things that, you know, kind of open our eyes to different possibilities. And we can continue to grow and change from that.
All right, I think we should move on to engagement, unless somebody else wants to talk more about responsiveness. Engagement was the, was the one area where somebody said that we, improvement needed in meeting the indicators. Otherwise, it was fairly similar to other responses. And does anybody want to speak to that? Or, or to any of these comments about engagement? I am looking forward to returning to greater attendance of school events. I know that we've been doing more and more this year. But I'm, I've really been glad that the kids have been here once a month. And, you know, I, I think that getting in the schools really reminds us of why we do this. So, so I think, I think we need to continue to work on engagement. But, you know, I, I know that, I know that we are. Anybody else? Or does anybody want to talk about, describe a situation when the board considered input put from multiple perspectives, or could have considered more input? Or, or do we, are we done with the self-evaluation for this year? And, and should we talk about, or think about if we want to do any changes for next year? I don't know that we have to, I don't know that we have to decide what those changes might be. But it's easier to think about them now than it is 11 months from now when we go to do this again.
I think one of the things-
Mike, going back to what you said at the top of this agenda item, I think it's as good as the conversation makes it. And I feel like this was some pretty good conversation with some tangible items to work toward. So in that respect, the tool worked to bring about some reflection and action items.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to gloss over it. Because, you know, we do have to, we do have to figure out how we're doing in order to continue to do better. You know, Dr. Miller has her goal setting and how she's done this meeting. And I think us having it at the same meeting is, works out well. So.
I think in the past, this is also comes up during the retreat. Again, where we can roll these, roll this discussion into our next goals. And sometimes when, when we've done this in the past, you could do a comparison from year to year on how the ratings are, but it's not necessarily the same board. So we really don't have a way to, to measure if we're getting better. It's, because we don't have measurements here. I don't know if it's that important, but I'm just raising that as something of board members would think about, if that will be valuable. I don't know if it would be or not. You know, we're getting better as a board if you ranked yourself, or is it just a feeling?
Well, I think it's important to, I, I think it's, it's important to, for people to try to get better as, as much as they can. And, you know, again, I think it's, I, I don't think we need to belabor it anymore tonight. But I, I do think if you're thinking about over the next couple of weeks, if you think, hey, I'd like to do this differently next year, write that down and send it to me, or, or send it to, you know, send it to other board members or Dr. Miller. Probably not other board members, because that gets a walk-in forum. But to me, or Dr. Miller, in that way, we can move forward and, and, you know, maybe change this if we, if we want to next year. Or it remains the same, and I, and we have a good discussion about it. And I think, I, I agree with you, Angie. I think we have had a good discussion about it.
I do want to say that, you know, I've done this for many, many years. And this is the highest ratings I've ever given, all of us together as a group. Because, and that says a lot about you new board members. It has been my best score. And I think we have full participation has been the best. So, good job.
And especially, you know, with the difficult situations which we had to deal with, especially with the COVID and the masking. I think we, as a board and as administration, I think we have done a pretty good job, especially some of the decisions which was done by Dr. Miller at the time of opening of in-person, you know, learning when everybody was shutting off. So we have proven that we might have difference of opinion sometimes, but all of us have good intentions. And that's the reason we're sitting here, and even with difference of opinion, but we always have good intentions. That's the reason we are always able to come together for the same purpose as such. So that has shown me for the past one year is that we might have differences on some stuff, but, you know, we still come together and support that common cause, which is providing the best, you know, platform for our kids to succeed.
Yeah, I think, I agree with you. And I think, you know, one of the things that Dr. Miller said earlier about, for five years, saying part of a better community, better place to learn, better place to live. You know, if we, if we keep remembering that, if we keep remembering we're here for the kids, if you keep remembering those sort of mantras, it really helps, it really helps going forward to, to remember why you're doing this.
One more thought I have is-
Please.
When I think about all the new faces that the district has, and all the new people that have come on board, this board has to really, you know, be together and provide that, that leadership. Because it's a whole new group. So we have to figure out that relationship right away and keep moving it forward. So I think we're in a good spot to do that, though. That's good.
All right, thank you. We can move on to E, Board Clerk's Report. Mrs. Larson, please.
Yes. Notice is hereby given that an election is to be held in the Franklin Public School District on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, for the offices of school board member. Two school board seats will be filled for a three-year term, beginning on Monday, April 25th, 2022. The ballot positions for the election are as follows. Position number one, Debbie Larson. Position number two, Jeffrey P. Hall. And position number three, Mike Sprague. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The, the Treasurer's Report is available in the Board Docs library. School Board Liaison Reports. Does anybody have any liaison reports? Not today. School and Community Engagement Reports. I was, I helped build the sets for Matilda a couple, I guess, last weekend. So it was nice to, it was nice to see so many people helping out with that. It was really nice, because I'm not really that handy. So I appreciate all the help we had with that. And Gary, who heads that group, has been doing this for, I think, eight or nine years. And he's really, he's really passionate about, about the kids and the theater. So it's, it's really, it's really nice to see so many people there. And people who know something about buildings, so our kids won't fall down from eight feet up.
No mobile wows?
Not allowed, it's backstage.
We, oh, go ahead.
Please.
Go ahead, Linda. Oh, okay. I did spend some time with Mr. Rollo at the high school. Gives me an hour. You have to really keep up with him as he pops around, pops around, hopping into classes. Financial planning class, kids are learning how to buy cars and things, and online. No, just kidding. And it was just, we did talk a little bit about some building projects, just, you know? Because I was kind of keying off the comment I saw in the survey about the use of the library space and how it's not being used. And then we go to the food places and how under that space is just not adequate. And I just said, well, let's put that over here, but we'll see how that goes. And they had a blood drive going on also. Again, I'm always impressed about how orderly the high school runs and how everybody knows where they're going. It's quiet, there's learning going on. So I'm impressed so far. Haven't found anything to complain about yet. Thank you.
Community engagement-wise, I was involved with the WSMAs solo and ensemble district festival for our music students. That was a whole day, a Saturday, two weeks ago. And that was, I mean, it was a whole lot of work. But it was really fun to have people from other districts come in and be able to help them, you know, find their way through the school and have them say, wow, this is a really great building. Or, I can't believe you have this kind of facility. Or to go in the Sabre Center and, whoa, you know, I didn't, you know, I've never been in here before. So it's just another one of those really proud of Franklin moments that we have, that we do. We have amazing facilities and really talented students. Our students performed exceptionally well. Many students going to state now for their music performances. So that was exciting. And then we got to have our middle school concerts last week, choir, orchestra, and band. And that was fun, too. Some of those kids, it was the first time because of COVID and the way the scheduling has been at the middle school with concerts and things, and their quarter schedules. It was the first time for some of those students that they have actually performed at the Sabre Center. So that was fun, to be backstage with them beforehand. With, oh my gosh, I can't believe in the lights and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And then to sit in the audience and hear the talent that we have. Though, you know, our, our students are really lucky to have such great educators and have great space to perform in. And the parents were just really buzzing afterwards. So it was another, another really fun, fun, proud moment.
I'd just like to share, those of you have students at the high school, they do a big March Madness thing at the high school. And Mr. Gaines is just remarkable at getting people to donate things. So I went over there for the March Madness event. And it was kind of like going to, to the, to a big bucks game. I mean, they had like strobe lights, they were tossing T-shirts, and just making it a lot of fun. But the best part of it is, the girls' basketball team played the women teachers. And they're only allowed to have two actual basketball players on the court at a time. So other student athletes participate. And the, the women who work for us did really, really well, but only scored two points. And so they lost. But then, when the male teachers played the, the male student athletes, again, only two actual basketball players could be on the team. It was a really close game. I thought maybe we'd have some work comp claims coming our way. And it was super exciting. For those of you who know Mr. Butcher, he teaches autos. He's a, a really tall, and one of the basketball players, you know, went to take a shot. It was like, didn't help. But, but the best part of the story I'm telling is, it was tie. And it was like, less than a minute left. And our student athletes had the ball, and they subbed in a student with a disability. And they gave him the ball, kind of cleared the way, went down, he took the shot, and he almost made it. But it was something out of a movie. It was just really remarkable. And I just thought that was a really- And I just thought that was a really nice event. And really proud of our students.
It was, I can say as a parent, it was the most engaged my high school students have been in anything like spirit related in, you know, four years. And it was all, I think, because the, the teachers and the staff and the administration really got into it and they had their tickets that they were passing out all week that they were, you know, like positivity tickets or whatever to win prizes and they were really into it. And yes, the description of the game was, you know, my, one of my students said it was more exciting than watching March Madness in like real March Madness. So it was, I think it was a really great event.
So Mr. Gain is just remarkable. So if you ever see him, thank him. He does such a nice job with that.
Thank you. Anyone else? School and Community Engagement Reports. I think I, I should mention that for under Board Liaison Reports. I did go to a CISA meeting last week. We had first interviews for a new executive director. And we will be having, there was five interviews, all very good candidates. And there will be three finalists next week. So, so I think by, by the end of next week, we'll hopefully have a new CISA executive director chosen. So that's what's happening at CISA. Anyone else? All right, I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C for discussion of compensation of representative employees and for review of administrators' performance.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. I think we need a roll call, please.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Dr. Beer will not be able to join us. Okay. And I vote aye as well.
All right, we are in closed session at 7:33. Those motion carries, we are in open session at 8:25. School Board Member Meeting Debriefing. Any school board member comments?
It's a good meeting.
Yep.
Yeah.
Lot covered.
It's interesting to hear the feedback from the survey.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to read this. All right, Future Agenda Items. Franklin High School Presentation, Sabre Center Update, Health Insurance Update, Board Officer Elections, Appointment of CISA One Annual Convention Delegate and CISA One Board of Control Member, Board Retreat Scheduling, SWSA Updates and Wisconsin DPI School Nutrition Recognitions. Obviously, D Forward will be in the last meeting in April because we can't, until we seat new board members, we can't have Board Officer Elections. So. So at any rate, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The meeting is adjourned at 8:26.